Councilman Woods, would you say the invitation?
First and foremost, we'd like to thank you for the food we have. A lot of people who prepared food, a lot of food that nurtured our minds by their soul. The fact that we gathered together over this presentation of all of this, with all these numbers, with all these ideas, with all these shared ideas, with all these shared thoughts, probably made more of it kind of better place, maybe for some people's sake. Amen.
Amen. All right, we can turn it over to you, Ron.
Okay. Chairman and members of council, this is our budget workshop we do every year, but it's a little, I think, cut off, a little not formal. We'll go through like we've done in our last five, six years, and show you kind of where we were last year and how things have changed, and then get to a point of budget request. That Sheriff and his crew here talk about things they asked for and other things too. And then hopefully, if the council brings it in, we can come to a conclusion, not necessarily tonight, but soon, so we can work with it. So, I know we just had a full meeting over there, and this chairman, I guess, there'll be a follow-up, just a couple of those. The parts of what they presented that need a little more work on that are the operating part, like the moving parts. The parcel that you may have to tie with the water parts that we need to look at.
You got a lot of time. Thoughts made in the order? Councilman Woods, would you say the invitation?
First and foremost, we'd like to thank you for the food we have. A lot of people who prepared food, a lot of food that nurtured our minds by their soul. The fact that we gathered together over this presentation of all of this, with all these numbers, with all these ideas, with all these shared ideas, with all these shared thoughts, probably made more of it kind of better place, maybe for some people's sake. Amen.
Okay. Chairman and members of council, this is our budget workshop we do every year, but it's a little, I think, cut off, a little not formal. We'll go through like we've done for the last five, six years, and show you kind of where we were last year and how things have changed, and then get to a point of budget request. That Sheriff and his crew here talk about things they asked for and other things too. And then hopefully, if the council brings it in, we can come to a conclusion, not necessarily tonight, but soon, so we can work with it. So, I know we just had a full meeting over there, and this chairman, I guess, there'll be a follow-up, just a couple of those. The parts of what they presented that need a little more work on that are the operating part, like the moving parts. The parcel that you may have to tie with the water parts that we need to look at, which is there. And then, with those numbers, probably build a recreation center, like two units of pool. And I think the recreation center part is, because there are so many different places that are configured in so many different ways. And a lot of the YMCA, so you've got to find one, well, you either got to find a YMCA person to give you the money, or you've got to find a town that people are going to go to. So, if you call my name like I'm supposed to be doing that, but I mean, we'll get that, and that'll be provided down quickly, if they don't have that. So, I promised this way, and ask them to sit over there, so we don't have to try to... Can you see it there? Yeah, I can see it there. While y'all are thinking eating, we'll do the part, you know, to show them facts, and when you get into the part, obviously, you're going to have to discuss this, this part. So, you know, when we get into the budget this year, we did, we will see some revenue growth, which is good. We'll play that detail, but we're in a period right now, at least in my lifetime, of more inflation than I've ever seen. And, you know, we've not necessarily gone through every single lot that's actually way up off of that, but really that's on the table. But that is something to consider. Revenue growth is a good thing. We had budget commitments in the last year, different things, you know, Sheriff's OT and things like that, or going to the stores, Sheriff's Field of Beer, and some other things after that, you know, kind of ate into some of that revenue growth. But that's kind of how it works, y'all make that decision based on the facts, and it's not bad, but just because you know that's how it works. And we have, you know, the list I gave you last time, we have $2.3 million of budget requests. There's a lot of requests, and those requests are sometimes they're needs, sometimes they're wants, you know, they're all there. And one big thing that we haven't had to deal with in three years is the solid waste rollcar contract. That comes up, that is for renewal this year. And of course, as you might imagine, since they're driving trucks around and hiring people and burning gas, they're an increase. So, we'll get into that in a minute on your options without handling that increase. It's pretty, it's not bad, and I'm really surprised when someone's going to do it, and Sheriff, I really work with them to try to minimize it. We'll get into that in a minute. Now, since I've been here, I've tried to use this thing for that, and I've got something back that some of y'all don't like that, so I tried to stick with it. And basically, we start where we are now, and then we build on what's going to happen, and we're also looking at what could happen. So, based on last year's first budget, when we voted in June or whenever it was, that's your budget. Or you see the expense side, and you see the revenue, and you see $454,000 coming out of the pool house, that came out of your reserve. So, if you start to look at expenses that you really can't avoid, you know, and you'll see them, you know, make sense to you, that they aren't really something that you said we don't want to do. You know, we did a change in overtime structure for public safety. You're not going to go back and, you're not going to stop doing that. So, that's, once that becomes a 12-month thing, you know, that has to amount for that. This is why I put in there, just because it makes the graph change, but, you know, Sheriff of Fields got an agreement to do more school resource options, a good thing, but they're going to pay us back for it, school. So, it's on that side, but it'll also be in the overtime. The state raises, we're ready for retirement, so they've been doing this for 34 years, they review it, go up to 15. Also, last year, you get a cost of living increase, so now that becomes 12 months. But those things that are together are that number. Property and vehicle insurance, a lot of miscellaneous things, fuel and things like that, that go up $120,000, and you can't avoid it, getting sold prices. We've got little things like, this is the operating thing, right, they've got body change, because they can, you know, it's not special, I mean, in one city, and they don't store it in a computer sitting under a desk, they store it out in an aisle in a safe location, whatever cost of living they're running through. Those are things that, you know, aren't, in my opinion, something you say, oh, we want to undo that. So, that's sort of the ones that are mandatory or artisanal. So, far so good. Okay, so revenue change, so let's look at the money coming in. Now, we've got that red, that red side jacked way up, let's look at the money change. So, the good thing is, we've seen almost a billion dollars increase in revenue. Now, some of that has, like, the re-averaging of school resource options, where that'll come back to a wash, but we still see an 800 or more increase in that. And some of the, where that's coming from, you're starting to see little property transactions going on. If you sell a house, you're taxed if you sold it on, so you've got people moving around, a lot of people talking to realtors, you'll hear them say, a lot of people coming in from out of town. We've also got this thing called the Rural Stabilization Fund that's a legislation passed for certain counties like ours that lost population, and that's like $325,000 that has come in, and we believe it's going to continue, so we're counting on that. So, that's good, and that's kind of what you've had in the past, you're kind of wrong enough to cover these mandatory things. You know, you want to get a cost of living raise, and you grow it up, and it's kind of going up the hill. And if you go that route, then you're back at using the same amount of reserves that you do in the past, but there's a very big change that you need to be aware of. Every year when you budget it, you budgeted over the last, I guess, I think, five years, when you budgeted, it's been $4,000, $5,000 out of the reserve. But every year when you get auctioned, it's always been times given that close proceedings, you don't give any tender. And the reason being is, you've got, the majority of your budget is, so when you have vacancies, like Sheriff and his crew are trying to fill the extension center, when you have vacancies, they're always like, you save a month, you save a month. It's not money you can count on, you don't want to go check a note out and take a paper base on. But what it's done is, every year, that $400 has been the magic number, ranking. Now, that you're paid better, and you're doing things, Council's doing things that actively makes your job better, and really pays it, not like, you're paying it late, you're going to have less vacancies, so you're going to save less money, in my, in Wes', and other cities. So, that magic number, where is the magic number? You know, 350, you know, 80, I don't know. I want to plant that in the back of the head as we look forward. So, all of this is without any budget request for the year, except those things called mandatory. Now, it's moving away. If you have any questions? So, we have $2.3 million budget requests. There are several funding sources other than general funds. That's, everything we're talking about tonight is not in general funds. That is the biggest part of your budget, and the other funds that we'll talk about today are things like rural fire, there has to be used supply. You can't take money out of rural fire and use it as a balance. You can't take money out of a property tax, and balance, like, somebody's truck, you can't do that. So, we have what's called a general obligation bond. So, only, when you get your tax bill, I think there's a 10-year, is that right?
No, it's only, only about five.
Okay, that's better, half as much. But anyway, that was put in place a number of years ago, even before, maybe when this place was started, to cover, like, roofs and renovations. And then we, when I first came here, we went and basically refinanced, so basically, you got the equity out, it's like you refinance your house, and you got the equity out, and use it for, for things that I'll talk about in a second. We have the rescue act fund, we've already committed $4 million rescue act fund for recreation, but there is like 200 left, and there is no plan that might be used for technology, which might come back, so we will talk about that. And of course, the one that most has most impact here is the straight up item. So, real quick, general obligation bonds, you know, we've used that for asset, asset items for the last longer term, so you don't want to buy a pickup truck, a coffee machine or something like that out of that, but you might, you know, what we've done is put roofs on, or buy a boulder grader, that kind of thing, things like that. So, we've been on sort of a five-year cycle since I've been here, and five years have passed, so there's some equity built up in there that can cover some of the requests in it, those being specifically, well, before I say that, cover some requests without any increasing taxes. These are the ones that belong to the request that we've done, that we feel can cover, we can cover, we can do. And as you can see, they're all long-term assets, so the parking lot behind the building where people park their football, the parking lot on the side of the hill, we have several roofs that are real complex, the windows going back to the admin building that's cut, it worked on, and the budget cut, so a year ago, Sheriff, I mean, the dump truck in the back road, yes, or leave. These things can be covered, they come off of that sheet, and be covered by this fund that's been set up on that, so we kind of piece that out of the way. This is important, this is the year where we have a lot of, any questions on that? We talked about rescue act money, four men set aside, that's been three years, there's about 250 remaining for technology uses, and we have a need to update our computer network system. We've got UIP, you're right, the C, over here, is very much packed, it's just together, very, very much. And computers are, you know, we all know, are very, very critical. The rescue act money focuses the fact that it allows you to have operational business if you need to. And then also, we have a number of computers that are coming off the lease that are outdated, and after staff has analyzed it, feel like it'd be better to kind of get those back in supply. So, these funds can come out of that, and now the impact of the $4 million, you've already set aside, and then taking that out of that general fund, and then, you know, I got your question. Any questions? Okay, what I'm here for, but, you know, keep in mind, is, when we start talking about, from here on out, we're talking about how the requests, more than likely, have to come out of the general fund. And the general fund is, you know, one of the biggest county buildings you see on your tax bill. So, if you can ask a question, there's an answer. One tax bill outranks at 65. If you can bring in, it's about 60. But again, we've actually, the first time I've been involved here, on Council or the legislature, seen it go up a little bit. That doesn't mean that necessarily it's impacted anybody who has something, it just means there's been more investment there that can be covered. It's a good thing. I'll remind you again, in the Lower East County, it's like $1.2 million. Talk, when you go to the Association of County, and you talk to people, and you want to have something good to go with it, that's where I want to build work, and tell the world. It makes a big difference. So, if you add one tax bill, it'll add $2 more taxes on $50,000 on the year. A real round number, but it gives you something to add. It'll add $3 more on rental property, and it says that the thing that's 60% success. So, that keeps me kind of a number to keep in mind, I'm having to go through this. So, when we go to the requests, we have, these are the requests that we picked up on with these other ones. We have some Sheriff's Department, and Chief of Field, and the person up there, and I was, he was about 75. The other ones we have are field-based, like the tax assessor every five years, or two years, five.
So, we're back?
We're kind of, these people go out and like, really look at how, measure how, as part of that process, you ask for that. Tax assessor, okay. I won't get into ranking right now, but I mean, that's not, tomorrow's not going to be the day, after our best, we're not going to. The next thing, if you need, you want to call for living truce from Ford, that's the sixth one, that's what you've done in the past, and you've approved of, an increase that may affect your life to Christmas, so it's a blessing to cover that. Now, again, next year, your council, you know, it's going to go 12 months, and you're going to gain more revenue, and it's covered. That's an important thing, because you've made great steps towards making competitive wages for the safety and, you know, and you don't want to slip back just the revenue. City of Jacksonville has built in five percent plus on dividend increases. Quite frankly, probably a little much, but this, you don't want to have inflation creep into what's paying people, and then you have to cut them off. The next thing, I said I'd put them on there, a weather warning, siren, this is something that came up, called after the tornado, and it took the country on the net, you know, they didn't secure it. These will be out in the community, so, you know, they won't fly out of the ride school and hit the street. And if you had tornado warning, something, it would, it would go off. And it's sort of the equivalent of the giant one, you have a water tank, which is all across here, and the spirit of the juice out of there, and it's going to run off. This may be able to be funded from the grant, but again, this is not a, we're not going to shut the county out for this. And then we have a request from the Twitter's office, who apparently, the state has come up with a formula for how we should fund that, and they're trying to use it for the operation of that, and the Twitter's office has, everybody's voice, specifically the star, the, you know, the dividend, dividend office, and, and, so they've gone to everybody and, that's it. Any questions about those four?
I don't know where to start, but there are a lot to say. I don't know for what, but I think this office was going to be on board to share with you, this is our budget, and obviously, more than what you have seen in the past. And I don't apologize for what people get asked, because they think that we, and we need to do, but, but, I can, I can read your thing, I can, I can dress the person, and you can, you know, they can hear from other players, I'm going to do it.
One of the, the tolls, you know, you've been awarded, you've been awarded by, you know, by, so that is annual leasing.
Oh, that would be great, like, the amount for the annual amount, and there's two of them are leased, that's the toll people pay. And, and, so that is annual leasing. I just put up there, you know, the, the, and, and the reason, I started with new debt, and I saw that, right now, we, we run about 30, 30 debt, if I'm not mistaken, a total, and another about 32, roughly 30. And out of that 30, we have four sites that work on here, and we have three, six, four ships now, because we're in a, we're working, we're moving around. So, we have three, four ships. And that's not bad, if you work in a small area, but we're covering 480 square miles, which we, well, up until December, you will cover 300, 485 square miles with two people working in that. Now, if you were calling for help, and you live in Welling, but over the city, you're working, hair town, doing something, that's where it is. And I'm certainly happy that we're 40. And that's where my concern is, because that was not clear to me, to you, to certain, and that's not out of order. The other side of it, if you give a dollar, they were, a decent amount, we give roughly $6,400 per service. That's how many dollars they give you, $6,000, if you divide that out to the other $6,000, that's worth something all the day. Now, two of these, you can't do that, call them, before it's been ready to start with the people. Not only do, with people, with people against, on problems, with people calling in, and then calling back, so if you get, don't front for that to happen. We're responsible, something happens to somebody, they don't, we can get here, we have that, we're responsible. And I'm just looking from this side, from the, so this is that, this is the opposite, you have to go out there, make your own decisions, and when they're going, we're going to do it. Sometimes it's one person going on a call, and yes, we're responsible to do that, we signed up to do that, we signed up to protect people, and serve the best of them, but we didn't sign up on two sides. Most people want to do what we do, and they sure wouldn't be looking about, even they have to do a bit. I'm about to say something, it has to do with, what's the one side, say, about, the city, they just don't have seven, eight square miles, city doesn't have seven square miles, they're going to, they got 36, 37, who's on? Let's go back to 485, you're 30, you do the math, and it makes sense. And it makes sense the way they're living now, you do on a daily basis. And if you get $50,000, that's what I think you're going to stay at, is 30, 35, 40, what they, what they saw, and then called in, what they have to say to you. And so, for that reason, and not, not for that alone, for that, we need to be this grand, and try to get some people. But if you're going to get that money, you need to be firm, and they're going to be the biggest time. If you take the call, and the call, and the call, and all the things that we're hearing, that will just make you circle out, and most of the death, does not do. I'm done with somebody who just works on the real thing, and that person's not a good person, because it's working, so you can't go to house, and that house, and house, all day. The only thing, if somebody does something wrong, you get a duty, and people that are just, if you can end up getting on the stage, it's that, it's that, you're off, it's here to take it. And you went there for that, and you're going to have to say that for that to do. If you feel like you're set out of call, and that's going to be a person that's not deserved, and you know that around us, it's not like you're hoping somebody will become like you, they ain't going to, you leave. And again, I will never say you lose our point, because there is a point, and I assume that, that we're asking for, if we're helping. I want to say down, since the Delta, the idea is to put four to five people per year, or, and for each four to five people per year, and run off, there's a section, a mom, and run on the ball, Friday, while, and industry. One person that basically is not helping, that's what we're, we're getting, they don't know what you're talking about, they don't know what you're calling, you know, you know it's something I'm trying to, failing, and that area is shaking, that's why you're doing it, if you can deal with it, it's going to cut down on wages. Right now, we have to break in, have to break out, break in, so we know about the change of policy. If you do the change of policy, you have to make the call, though. You know, people can't do that. The first act we want to do, we, we, the first act we want to do, is, we break, we call, we break, and if it's a, that's what we have to do. In fact, I don't know where it's going to be, in fact, I don't know where it's going to be, it's something, and somehow, keep the future better. And I know I'm asking, and feeling, um, if you, um, from all four people, and some of you can understand it, if you go to the local, you know, you hear the problem, or you're just, why you want to stay? You go there, and you're in that corner, and you're going, you're already on, you're stuck. If you could suck, you'd hear on some pole, and a reason to do that, it makes me wrong. Right now, you go from low, to, on the low end, straight to the, it's done, but we create four, four, I think it's three, four, four, four. And so, there's everyone, they give them, and some, there's some that look forward. Think about, one person, a guy, goes, everybody, everybody, somebody comes up, we're four people, we come over, that's some that look forward, no one that is, that keeps on waiting. The problem, if they're wrong, they're kind of, or they're, they're, and it's probably we have all the way up for you, when you, we do this, we do that. But the current, because they're all young, and they're not coming. So, if they're not coming, and those two sides, if you're going to sit up, if you have a still right here, look back on the time, you're going to be 74. The only way you can move is, give them something, it's going to take them, you want to stay, and that's where the sort, the, the service, whatever it is that, follow each step, and you, you give them something to look forward, maybe they don't want to go, they're, they're doing, you don't, they have an opportunity, you have to call your son, your kids, that they're like. We need to be, we need service, we want to be, how we want to follow them. People are supposed to always follow, we have some, they, the ordinary police, they have to go away, they don't want to, they go away to them. You got to talk, learning to help, and we get to talk, that's it. We go to the office, and I think, sort of, some talk, make sure, yes, we do, yes, we do, but I thank you to do that, we need a dog, we don't have a dog, we had a dog, dog had to be, and I do, I think we're going to feed the dog, and it's a waste of money. Nobody cares if they're used to it. So, we sent the dog back, I'm sorry, there's no need to have a dog, I'm not going to do that. So, we sent that dog back, but we need a dog, we need that, we need somebody, we were going to call about a month ago, something, say, we're going to, we're looking for two individuals, and, yeah, we had a dog, we had to keep the dog, because we didn't know where to go, we took the dog, the table right on there, it was coming down, I don't know where it was, and we had a trash, and we're going, and we took that dog right out. We can give a dog, if you want, with the, I don't think they'd turn, they'd just miss it, well, it was a student, it was a student, we think, we think, we walk around and see what it is up. I'm not saying there's girls in the school, they, they, they don't, they don't want to be taken. You know, I think there was a partner, the student, the student, in the past, in my experience of that, the student was going to get a personal health care.
Now, personnel, no, there's no way for granted, you're going to pay
Now, personnel, no, there's no way for grants going to pay for a person. But anything else that I talk about, yes, we can find ways of getting money. And, and, and we will, uh, we are working on grants as we, I promise y'all. You'll be surprised about the energy and time that's going, and what we're doing right now, trying to find ways to save money. I, I'm not asking you for something that, 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 that we can find some other place. If there's a way to get money, we're getting it. We've gone from eighty thousand dollars to pay for some body warm vests. We're down to twenty-five thousand dollars with the same vest, because we took the time to look and crunch numbers and figure out how to do it. Those, um, the, the body cams that we've been talking about at thirty thousand, we got somebody to pay for those body cams. Where they're paying, we have a dollar to spend thirty thousand for those body cams. And they should pay for it, they said, they've agreed to pay for it every year. But at the same time, their grant, that's grant money out there, we can go back every year to make sure we got that thirty. But it's probably around twenty-nine or thirty thousand dollars. And the reason for that is, we have to pay for the licenses for each camera. And they're stored in a cloud where they need to be, where they're safe. Um, because there is a problem sometime when you put something in a server, that it can't be, somebody can manipulate that server to get what they want out. And on another day, I'll tell you how it's been done already. Um, but it's been done here. But that's bad. So by using the cloud, getting, and, and we're getting, I, I, obviously, when it comes to technology, I know very little about technology, but between Steve and, and TJ, we're comfortable with what we're doing is the best route for us to take. And it's the safest route for us to take. Is that a ongoing cost? Yes, it is reoccurring. But in that reoccurring, we can, we found ways to pay for it. So what you may be saying, you're paying for one time, you don't have to worry about it again. Like the vesting I'm talking about, we went from eighty to twenty-five, seven hundred and something. But that's a one-time cost in five years. You only have to buy a body vest once every five years. And by law, they're supposed to be wearing them. I promise you, all of ours are outdated. So if something happened to anybody right now in a vest, uh, we're allowed. We are allowed. And you're going to pay it. Uh, I had a friend that used to say, he's going to write the check. No sense to argue about it, just write the check. It's easier than now to write a five hundred dollar check, or a five million dollar check. You do the math, which one's easier to do? I'm not trying to escort you in any way to get what we need, but these are things that we truly need. I'm not, I want a helicopter. I said, I want. But I know what I need. So I'll sell for that drone, but somebody's going to pay for the drone, the drone is paid for. We don't even have to worry about paying for the drone, it's paid for. We don't have to worry about training, it's paid for. The drone, we can use them at football games, basketball games, we can run, we're tracking people. AMI is a good, AMI and the, the track, the tracking we did the other day would be a good example. And I'm not saying anything bad about AMI, but every once in a while, we have to go out. You get the drone in the air, the kids in the wood, the drone does the work. It's, uh, this one is heat censored, so it'll find the bodies. It says man hollow, we had everybody working about, it had to be a month ago, on sale. One drone, one dog, you wouldn't have needed three or four people. They would have got on bottom right back and done.
For so many people you have, that, out there.
It was everybody that was working first shift. Claw came over, McCall came over. Ben's real cane. And we stood and fought, because we couldn't get them out of the woods. Now, the gas and the money that was spent trying to find those two people, that entire day, because all of us stayed in the woods, all that done. And, and, but, like, you think about it, you guys that know anything about drones, about dogs, how much time and money that was spent in doing that, because that was overtime for some people. Now, we didn't have to play Claw, eight, Claw on the call, but that was gas out there costs. That was time that they lost from their cities over here helping us. Yeah, drones are expensive, but like I said, it's, it'll be paid for. The guys are already trained, it's paid for. We've cut back with the new, with, uh, the technology that we just brought in with Lexapro, uh, we're cutting way back on training. Uh, like, right now, all of us are about to be training in EVAC, that's a basic driving. And you're supposed to do it, but we can do it online. As opposed to us having to go to Columbia, or Florence, somewhere to get trained to, to drive. Now, we consider it a desk and do that. And, and, and that has to do with the computers that we're getting, not, but what we got now, the software won't accept, pretty much. But we're changing it, so we're getting them, thanks to Steve and, and TJ, we're getting the stuff we need when it comes to laptops. I mean, we have some outdated laptops, so. The whole department was using one for, for, um, those deputies have one. And that's the only one they have. So if you got three guys, you got to do a report, two of them got to wait while the other one does the report, that could take forty-five minutes, an hour. And if they're off work, that's two guys, you're paying two or three hours overtime for them sitting there waiting to use the computer. That's a waste. And, and we realized that was a waste. And we started correcting, we started correcting by using phones, by getting the laptops that we need, cut back on the amount of time that they have to be out, we can give, they can do all their work now, pretty much. I almost said, oh man, where you putting a hotspot now? Because of what we're doing. It cuts back on them doing study, because they have to do their training online, too. So all of that now has been cut back on. We found approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year that you've been paying for X amount of years, that was wasted. I don't mean a little waste, I said a hundred and sixty plus. Thanks to Wes and I spending some time, for about half a day, a half a day, for somebody else to tell us why we spent seven thousand dollars a month for something that we don't even use. Seven thousand dollars a month, I didn't say a year, I said a month. But that was one item. If we keep running down the list, I can name more and more and more, a waste that we found. And, and, and we, I promise you, I'm a good steward of money, because I'm stingy. And I sure don't want to spend somebody else's money. I'd rather spend your money, but I don't want to waste it either. And the things that we're asking for, they aren't wants, they're needs. If you want to keep a good, quality group of people, what we have right now, and I can say that wholeheartedly, we've got a good group of good quality people that's working, and we need to keep them. And it's hard to keep young kids to start. And we have to do something to, to want them to want to stay here, to want to stay in Marlboro County, not just here, but in Marlboro County, period. And we have to be equitable on how we pay them and what we pay them. That's the thing, we can't compete with Florence, we can't compete with those places, but we can do other things to make them want to stay on. See, I can convince them that it costs four dollars a gallon to go to Florence and back, and that's a hundred miles a day. That roughly three and a half to four, four gallons of gas. I can convince them to stay home with that. But I say that I pay them enough to make them want to stay. I got to give them something to want to stay here, other than that, so that's where the sort team comes in, that's where the dog, that's where the dog team comes in, that's where that, that drone comes in. That's where enough people working so they don't have to run their butts off every day to get a job done, they can work, and they can take time off. Think about it, these people don't even get vacations. They don't have time to take vacation. They can't take vacation. How many of you get a chance to go home and go on vacation? You don't have to raise your hands, they don't. Because we can't afford to let them off work. And then when they get off work, what do they do? They don't have a life. But that's the job they chose. And I'm thankful that they chose it, and I hope all of you are too, because you're the ones that, y'all, some of y'all have to call on them, too. And we're thankful, I am, I'm thankful that they work for us. As far as the detention center, it ain't much better. We have a total of twenty-two people, trying to guard ninety-six people. There are two and three people on the shift, again, no mobile mobility. They need at least thirty people working in that jail. They're doing the best job that they can do. And by the way, both departments are now almost fully staffed. I think, well, I'm like, three, we got three people short in the sheriff's office now. And hopefully this week, I don't think they're about, one, one short at the detention center. So we filled up in the past two or three months. We got them back where we needed to be, but now we got to make sure we can keep them there. And that amount of money that they're paying, that we are paying them at the detention center is not fair. I'm not going to say it's wrong, I'm not going to say it's right, I'm saying it's not fair. Are we competitive? Yeah. But guess what, because of that thousand dollar bonus that we've given, and because of a hope that we're going to get that three thousand dollars across the board, a lot of people that left Marlboro County and went to Chesterfield, Hemingway, and some of those places are now coming back, because they say we can see where things are going to be given. Now, if they come back home, that's a blessing for us, because now they're home. We can get homegrown people that know and understand the people that, that they're having, the housing, those jails. The warden, I think, is doing a good job to keep things going the way they're going, but we have to have more people. I think the last van that they bought is sort of detention van that put real transport, transportation van is of two thousand and ten. I can't promise you it works all the time. And there's transportation going on, with the process that we hope that we have in place within the next couple of months, with, um, federal prison, federal prisoners, that we're going to have something that we transport every week. And it's going to be two, three days a week they're going to have to make transport. Fifteen to sixteen inmates, federal inmates, can bring in a huge amount of revenue, and it's all revenue. I won't say publicly how much it is, but I'd be glad to share with y'all at some other time, but it's a huge revenue. It's not only going to pay for this, it's going to pay for whole lots of stuff. We've already, yes, sir?
Would, would, would that increase, would there, would there be more, uh, detention, detention center officers just to go over there, would that include?
That, that's included, that those five.
Five new ones?
Those five new ones will, will also be responsible. I'm adding five more to the detention center overall. And we won't need anymore, if we get those five, we're good.
Everybody here on the same, when they start, everybody at the same place?
Yes.
I hope I haven't left anything out.
It's on that seat in front of you, look at it, make sure, because I think I got it.
I've been looking at that last.
You're like me, I'm saying one. I look at the big screen, too.
Yeah. Um, I don't think I've left anything out. Again, I want a helicopter. But I'll sell for five new deputies, seven patrol vehicles, five more officers, a transport van, and a, something else on there, I want what's up there. I need what's up there, but I want a helicopter. But I, we need what's up here, and we need it if we want to continue to do what we're doing now. A lot of this stuff, you'll see, we're asking for is one-time deal. Uniforms, it's one-time. We will keep them up, we'll keep them where they're supposed to be. Again, they need to look like always, I don't mean no harm, I have nothing to do about what other folks look like. But if I walk up to somebody, I want them to know I'm a cop. I want them to know that, yes, sir?
Yeah, I, I get some further questions today.
That's fine, that's what I'm saying.
Computers are those like, just, additional computers are about the same contract, computers.
It's, it's additional, but, it's additional, and I, I was going to say this when he got through, but if you take, if you take what he's asking, the, the, the salary thing are the things you got to, I mean, not salary, the, the, the ongoing people thing are the things that you've really got to hash out. When you look at his budget request, they've done things to save money to the point that it all kind of washes everything else. Which is true about a lot of departments, but, and I'll commend, uh, everybody involved, um, they're good about finding that money for those one-time things. So I, 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 from my position, the computers, stuff like that, I mean, that's, you know, we, we can figure that out.
And we can find grants, y'all, you would be surprised, surprised what we can find. What we can't find, and I'll be honest, is salaries.
Yeah.
And, and, and we probably could do some of that if we did agree on that, but I would not base somebody's livelihood on a grant. That's not fair. Now, to me, that's wrong, and people do do that. I don't intend to do that. And I won't be made to do that, I don't think it's right. But anything else, we, uh, we will do everything we possibly can to make sure that we're saving. Now, we're going back and start hunting for some stuff that, that, that we should have and be responsible for, we're going to go back and start looking for some stuff. We got people that's been out of jail for twenty years and never paid bond. We deserve our money. We got people that just got out and they're paid up. You'd be surprised how much that can come through up here at the time. And there's, uh, no statute of limitations on that, that's the good thing. So we can start looking for somebody, that's more ways of bringing it from. I said, the body warm vest and all that's one-time, five years, we do it again. Cameras, I think we'll have that covered. It's radios, I think we talk about radios, with a huge, come next year, twenty twenty-three, thirty-one of our radios, those eight hundreds will be outdated. And we'll have these upgraded, and I think we can cover those with, uh, JAG, JAG ring. But we should be able to take care of some of that, not all of it, we can't, but some we can. I'm still questioning whether we even need eight hundred radios, or whether we use four hundred. That's an argument that we can have with, 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 with taking people out.
We, we just recently had a, a meeting with, um, the city, with Steve Akers, about the sort of same thing, so we'll get everybody in the same room.
Yeah, because I, I don't see a need for eight hundred, we can have them.
Back up, kind of.
Yeah, or we can get them from Steve, if we need them, we can get them from some other place when you need them, you only need them when you're doing certain things. Uh, so, it's not that much of a need, but there's a lot of training going on. I'll invite y'all, I think sometime in general, we're going to have, uh, active shooter training, I got somebody coming in that's going to do active shooter training. I know the school district is going to be a part of it, invite y'all to come to be a part of that. We're just going to do so. I want to make sure that people that work in sheriff's department are proud of who they are and what they do. I want their family to be proud, I want you to be proud of who we are. And that you're satisfied with what we're doing. I'm going to make sure, as long as I'm here, that those things happen. When I leave, or will, I still want to be happy, because I'll be on the other side, and I really want to be, but I'm going to take my gun with me.
Full, uh, fully staffed right now, if you were fully staffed, but I hope I'm not, how many would you have a, I think, first year, first year?
Right now?
No, if, just.
Just what I had at?
Yeah, about it.
Five, five people per shift?
No, without, without, no, I'm saying.
Without that five?
Yeah, you have, you're saying.
I would have three plus a supervisor.
Okay.
And it would be right now, three plus a supervisor. And one shift, yeah, three plus a supervisor, one shift would have two, because I'm. And once you, yeah, three plus a supervisor. One shift would have two, because I moved one guy over. I can't put him back. I need to get something else. But I want four. I want somebody in every, I want somebody in every part of this county. Somebody needs to be in this county. You can't run this county with two or three people, y'all. I'm sorry, you just can't do that. And I'm talking from about forty-something years of experience. And I'm not talking about somebody who just started doing this yesterday. And I'm not bragging. I'm thankful that God let me live this long to do what I do. It's a blessing for me. And I understand what I'm talking about. I understand what I'm saying. And I understand the need that y'all don't even know you need.
Let me ask you about that. That one thing, if there was one thing that you would have put on there, but you didn't really start with the stretch, that you knew you really needed?
More people. More people.
That's it.
All we need is people. We need people, y'all. You need to know when you go to sleep, you're going to need people. We got two, three investigators, three right now, and they're busting their tickets. And they're working hard with three. You can check with the magistrate's office and see the difference in what has happened. You can just ask the magistrate with the amount of warrants and what they're doing to see the difference of what's going on right now. And it shouldn't stop. It needs to continue. We're going to start that program. We can't do what I wanted to do because of the age, but we're going to start a cadet program in the middle schools. Using SROs to work with the kids in the middle school. That's going to change some kids' minds and the way they act, because we're going to teach them and we're going to show them the right thing to do. We're going to show them how they should dress, and if you're a part of that, then you're going to dress that way. You know, kids do things based on what the other kids doing. So if we can get them involved in those kind of things in the school, so by the time they get to the high school, they got less problems. They'll have more interest in their education. And all those things can happen if we just, we're willing to make some sacrifices. And I'm not sure how much of a sacrifice this is, but I know it's some, and I understand that. I'm in that same bracket. I got to pay for it too. Go ahead. I can't get anything answered if you ask a question, man.
I mean, I know, you know, in years past, there was some traffic enforcement generated dollars. Is there anything you need to do?
That's where it comes with L E N, coming to L E N meeting today. We don't do traffic per se, but we can do checkpoints. Can we give to the traffic? Yes, we can, but we can't right now. It's impossible for us to work traffic right now. If a guy stops a car right now, if he's tied up for an hour on one traffic stop, able one other person working in the county to it the most, and you just tie him up. And they're mad at me now because I won't let them do traffic, and they're all upset with me, some of them. But I see the bigger picture. I see that you can get tied up, two of them can get tied up, and you can't leave it and say, well, y'all stay right here. I'll be right back. That ain't right.
Sheriff, another day in the country, traffic. We haven't had any issues in Marlboro County, but with the trust of police officers now, you know, traffic. I appreciate where you all down in that right now.
Well, see, that's.
Where you all build the trust up back into the.
It works.
It works.
There are some things that we can do. There's a whole bunch of stuff. I wish I could, well, I can. Invite all y'all and take some kids to FBI academy. In June, I've taken five kids to the academy. One is a high school senior that wants to see what it looks like, and I can do that. And so I'm going to take five to the academy just to see if, took them about two, three years ago before, and that was the first time they had ever had visitors at the academy that weren't candidates. And so we can take them now, and so I'm taking some, just so they can see what it's like. I'll invite some of y'all. I can take up to fifty, I think, this afternoon. It's a good trip to see what it's like. Any other questions? Please, please give them to me if you got them. I will give you a.
I'd just like to say something to Sean Paddy. A long time, but I'm too scared to stop now.
I will give you an update on a conversation that Mr. Blackman and I had the other night. Yesterday, we had somebody, one of the guys had come in from Highway Safety and do an assessment of Salem Road, gravel pit, and cocks. And as a result of that, he went back and has gone to South Carolina DOT with his recommendations of what he thinks would be needed there. And I know it's going to get to the director, but Kat was in a meeting today, and it came up. So there has been, there is conversation going that, and it's not a dangerous highway. It's just the way it is. We've had too many. One is too many. But it is being looked into. They were here yesterday. Jackie's not here. Jackie, Jackie went yesterday with us, and Ms. Huff went with us yesterday, and she took some pictures, and they're working on it. Now, I can't tell you it's going to happen in the morning, but I know it's being looked into, and they are going to make some suggestions. Well, he did make suggestions already. He sent them out last night. I got them this morning on what he's going to be recommending to do at gravel pit and on control and Salem Road. And we're going to continue to do what we can, not just in enforcement, but in safety altogether. Anything we can do to keep people safe is what we're supposed to be doing.
Any other questions? Here for the other presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Did anybody take a break or anything?
Keep it going.
Okay, okay, so I guess probably this is a good point to go to the sheet that y'all have in front of you that has a yellow on it. Looks kind of like that. See? Okay, so this kind of gives you where you are. And what I'm going to do, what I'm going to try to do here, if I can make it do it. Is that still big enough to see you on the screen?
It has changed.
Oh. Hold on one second. I'm switching from one thing to another sometimes. Okay. Okay, now you can see it, right? Did it change? Okay, so what it did was with this sheet, and you have a copy of it. This is, these are the requests we just went through. And I took the mandatory stuff out because we've either figured out how to handle it with something or it's different. So just for the sake of looking at it, I'm going to take all requests, everything we've got on here, and I'm going to put them in this box. So it shows you the total amount now of everything together. Then, if you look where, I don't know if you can see the thing, but it says mileage used. The state legislature passed a law eighteen years ago that limits how much county government or a city or whoever can raise property taxes in a year. And it's a percentage of the previous year's mileage, and it's based on inflation and some different factors. And they send us a letter every year, and they say, here's how much you can go up. So you can go up or choose not to go up, and if you don't go up in the years prior, you can take up to three years. You can put, you can build up. So this council did not raise taxes last year. In fact, you went down on taxes to some degree because you properly adjusted to the reassessment, remember all that? The value of everything being taxed went up, so you had to lower taxes so that you weren't doing a backdoor tax increase. So you've got three years in the bank, and that equals about eight and a half mils, eight and a half mils. Now, remember before we had the sheet, and I believe your house was two dollars a mil, fifty thousand, and the other was three dollars. So that gives you an idea. So I'm going to go in that box, and this is just to start the conversation. And I'm going to put in the max amount of bills that you can take. So now you see it, the bottom two lines. Can y'all, can y'all see it okay? The bottom, the bottom line right now, if you raise taxes, if you have to, if you choose to do everything on the sheet, and we already know there are a couple of things probably could come off, and you raise taxes the maximum amount allowed by law, then you would be required to spend a million, a million one out of reserve. So worst case, worst case tax increase, Mr. Black? Worst case spending money, you know, that's where you are. And so the difficult part now, and this has been a little different this year because we've had some needs that have built up, is to decide what to do and what not to do. I don't know that, you know, you can sit here tonight and say, take this off, put it on, but that's why I gave you the sheet, so you can ponder it, because, you know, it's your choice. You can raise the taxes, but you can't go more than eight and a half. And you can run the rest out of reserve. That is your prerogative and your discretion. I personally would strongly recommend against burning the reserve out like that. It would take five years, six years to go to zero, and you don't want to do that, I don't think. But you do see how it would play out. And if any of y'all are, you know, like to mess with Excel spreadsheets, I'll send it. You can play with it yourself, you know, and see what would happen with the different thing. Again, I'll reiterate that there are, you know, there are things on here that I'm prepared now to say that really could come off, you know. And Mr. Chairman, I'll just do that. The weather siren thing, you know, that's something we might can live without, and we can look for grant funding, you know. Like Sheriff Neal said, there's a lot of that out there. So you begin to take stuff off, and, you know, then you're in a little better position. You know, you might could reduce the tax assessment request, that kind of thing. But again, not to beat a dead horse, but this is sort of, you know, this is sort of where you are. This is, this shows you the max you can get. You know, you want to go, hey, man, we're going to do what we got to do, eight and a half mils. So if you do it with that one change I just made, that's where you would be. And I think that's the most important thing, in my opinion, for you all to ponder, and then the next, you know, the next get-together, staff needs that direction, go ahead and build the budget. But, yes, sir?
You're saying you have community assistance, sixteen, seventeen, oh, no, sixty thousand dollars increase per year?
Yes, so if you go up here, of course, you know, I've got a sheet for everything, and I hope it's right. So on a six percent, like if you got a rental property or a building or something.
It's a home.
Okay, so not rental. Well, not just rental, a business, you know, but if it's your house you live in. With, now, everything's complicated. It's like peeling an onion. There's another layer underneath. You know, this explanation that I'm running is based on a local option, the discounts you get at the end and all that, not changing. And I don't think it's going to change.
Yeah.
Not to be.
You'd be able to maintain that.
So there's your number. If it goes up, if you went up to eight and a half, the change would be twenty-five dollars. So it'd be twenty-five more dollars on the house you live in.
Fifty thousand.
That's correct. And then if you were to do it on, you know, if you got a business, you know, you've got a, oh, wait, wait, Mr. Strohman, I did that wrong. Let's try, let me try again. It'd be seventeen dollars, seventeen dollars. It would be twenty-five for like if, you know, your business.
Rental house too. Rick rental has.
Yeah, rental house, business property, anything other than your residence. I don't think anybody here owns a factory, you know, which would be ten and a half or maybe fifteen thousand. Now, what I'll do is, if you want me to, I can make up a little chart, kind of like you used to have where you look down and see where, when. I'll make y'all go up and send it out to you, where, what if, what does that mean? But that gives you a quick damn dirty of that. So is that, like I said, I'll get you more information, but does that get us to a point y'all can take this under mind?
Yeah. That doesn't matter.
Yeah, can you do the, I mean, whatever you're trying, five thousand, quarter thousand, quarter five thousand, when you can get everything or, you know, or what?
I looked up before we came in here, and it didn't seem right, but it said that the average, the average value of a house in over a county was seventy-eight thousand dollars. What's it? In a seventy-eight thousand dollar house that you live in, when raised at twenty-six fifty-two, so, yeah, I can.
So I just don't know, sort of, everybody would all mind, I mean, but sort of, when a homestead owner, someone on sixty-five, a homestead owner, fifty thousand dollars, with that extra there, where would that put the number?
It would be over, whatever's over fifty, so help me from here. So like, say you had a seventy-eight thousand dollar home, and you're a homesteader. So that's effectively paying taxes on twenty-eight thousand dollars. So that would be a nine, ten dollar increase on your house if you're on homestead. And I know, you know, it's a good point. Y'all have always been sensitive, and in the next subject, it comes up again about people on homestead, because homesteaders are folks over sixty-five or disabled. They're folks that can't get out and earn, you know, that have something that keeps them from earning, so you want to try to help them as much as you can. Okay, I'll get you all that, and I've got some more on this other. I know it's long.
It's hard to do that, but I tell you that people, people will actually pay for services. They understand the need, and they see where it goes. They're happy, you know, they take that increase.
You got two, you got two little people out there, too. You got one little person, but I'm going to speak to also the person that they were saying, why did you have to pay for money? I mean, that, that, didn't you say that? I mean, that, that, didn't say that, you know? That, like, we, we, of all that, he go cheat, we go it, who is? You know, and you're right, the added person, but then you always have somebody being there after. I don't pay no money, I don't know, no way. Somebody stole something from you two years ago, they ain't got it. You know, but, like I said, I like what Jake was saying. You gotta get a, um, a general idea of levels of paying. So I said, we do that on the fifteen point, and on seventy-eight thousand, eight thousand on half, you know, they gotta make sure, we gotta make sure we're doing the right thing and make sure we get out what they need also, you know? So it's, it's a disaster situation.
I, I agree with everything you're saying. The only thing I'll say to help you is that when we did EMS is a good example. But see, that sat on its own. The thing with the general fund is everything's in there. So, you know, and y'all hear, you hear it all the time. Oh, you're using that money to pay for this, or you're wasting this money. And there isn't any waste in there. Like, when we had to do the EMS system, we had to tax, we billed, nothing but EMS. And we didn't, politically, didn't really catch a lot of slack on that, nor do we on rural fire. So the trouble with, with, um, the other budget, which is public safety and nine-one-one and everything like that, it's like you said, people are like, you know, you're wasting money, you know, where are we going, kinda thing?
I know that you can't keep providing the same services that we provided when we had forty thousand people in the room on the county. And now we have twenty, twenty-sixty county prisons. You can't provide the same service without some type of government.
Well, the thing that, you know, from my, where I see it, has helped a lot is, there are two things that are already made improvements. Sheriff and his crew have all worked together hard. I mean, they, you know, they'll burn your phone up now. I mean, they won't. But they filled spots that have been vacant for years. So I mean, you know, already, they're moving in the right direction, that's great. The detention center's still a challenge, but things he's asked for to make salaries fair and keep things going, you know? And then the new stuff, you know, that's something you gotta consider. But, uh, we, we had got to the point where we had two people on the road there. And if you're like me, or every other, you know, person in the county, that maybe has a scanner when you're working in your workshop or something, you wanna listen to it on a weekly back in the day and listen to somebody run, run the walk call. Also, and you know, some of the calls are, you know, nothing, but they still gotta go, and then, then you hear them on urgent call, they're in the fly phone. Okay, so, so I'm gonna get you all this, and then I'm gonna go back to the sheet. I'm gonna try to. Okay. Does it work? Does it work? Okay, the next big topic, and you know, you just kinda fell on this year, you know, things happen that way sometimes, is the roll card service. So as you know, we, when we, uh, when the, when the council decided we needed to do something about trash collection, other than have people throw it in the woods or take it in the back of the car, we went through, this is something I'd forgotten until we started doing this. We had community meetings, y'all remember that? We went out and took the heat and answered the questions and chose what was best. And really, the only complaint was that folks were concerned when they got their tax bill with it on it, is they had to pay it off at one time. And, you know, that was a concern, genuine concern. Council responded, staff, I mean, staff went out and responded to council's wishes and were able to negotiate a lower price for people on homestead. And that's the way it is, we pay you a lower price if you're over sixty-five, I'm just saying. We did that. And folks settled down, I mean, at least I don't hear, I think people finally realized, oh, man, I've got this car. It takes a long time to fill it up, I ain't gotta haul trash in the back of my car. And if they talk to people who live in Chesterfield or somewhere, they're paying thirty dollars a month, so it came out to be all right. So it's been going along good. I, I don't get a lot of calls from you all. Occasionally, we'll get a call, and they have to back up and go, call them and get them to go get it. They've got a good guy working here, Keith Odom, if y'all know Keith, who chases it down. So everything's, from everywhere, everything I hear is going okay. Right now, you created a solid waste fund, so you created a fund that is nothing but for solid waste. And I'm a firm believer in that, and I've pushed that as long as I've been here, to have money that's for a specific purpose, that you're charging a separate fee for, to go into the pot and not get mixed in with anything else. So all that money that comes off the taxes for that fee goes into one account. The only thing that is not covered in there is, like, when you take trash to the convenience centers, operate in these convenience centers, that politically, everybody wants one in their town, you know, whether that's really the right way to do it, I don't know. It's very, very difficult to police and know who to charge and who not to charge, and so it loses money. And because of that, right now, the general fund is putting two hundred thousand dollars into that fund. So you can transfer between, it's a subsidy. So right now, two hundred thousand dollars worth of tax money we've been talking about, which is somebody divide that by sixty-five, and it's three something mills, is going in to subsidize this. Now, you know I'm laying the groundwork, I can't do it as good as Chief McNeil, but I'm working on it. The other thing that's a concern for us, which is just kind of a nerd thing that Wes and I probably worry about is, you know, we like to have a reserve in there equal to five months operating, and we're close to the bone, and we haven't been able to do that. But the bottom line is, we have to do something this year, the contract has expired soon. If we're gonna continue that service, we have to make, uh, council will have to make decisions. And so that decision is basically, do you increase the rate on the bills? Which there's some good, there's some positive for that and some negatives. Or do you decide to cover the increase by raising, by putting more money out of general fund into that? If you do that, then that, that orange sheet all of a sudden has another line on it that says fifty-eight thousand dollars more. Those are your options. Now, I'm just gonna keep going Doug, because Doug's done a lot of work on this. Here's kinda where we are now, and, uh, I know it's complicated the way it's laid out, and it's the best we could do. So currently, the contractor is charging us a hundred and sixty dollars for homestead here. And then a hundred and ninety-five, um, for everybody else. And then what we're passing along to the citizens is a hundred and seven, two, and two oh five. The intent was to get that ten dollars extra to cover the convenience center. Makes sense. So, um, we now charge to use the convenience center if you bring out like the whole truckload of stuff. But if it's just somebody coming out, you know, there's not a charge. Um, and we have that two hundred thousand dollar transfer from general fund. What we've done is gone out, Doug has done this, has gone out to the contractor and negotiated a rate with them. Or gotten them to tell us what they want, and then we negotiated with them. So you have two options, one is a one-year contract, and the other is a three-year contract. And if you look at those numbers. This, of course, mighty common. Their charge to us on a one-year would be one seventy and two twelve. Their charge on a three-year would be one sixty-seven and two twelve. Now, staff recommendation across the board, and we've been through this, is to go with three years. Because when we negotiated the three-year contract three years ago, we were in a time of good, the good economy, low inflation, low interest rates. I mean, it was good times, remember? For COVID. And for them to come in and basically be willing to set a fee for three years, you know, would give us stability as we go through this next three years, which are gonna be volatile. You know, and then at the end of that three years, you can negotiate again. The question to you all, a decision that has to be made, not tonight, is do you pass that along all the way to the county residences? Or do you increase the general fund transfer to cover it? So again, you can see recommendations under one and three, one, under one year is to go to, well, they're the same. The, 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 the recommendation would be to go from one seventy for homestead to one eighty-five a year. Now, this is a year, be divided by twelve, that's my whole life. And then other residents from two oh five to two thirty-five. And that would allow us, you know, to correct, you've been looking at a lot of numbers last today. That would allow you not to transfer.
No transfer.
No transfer from the general fund.
Hundred percent good.
If we can achieve that, then that's effectively two hundred thousand dollars in general fund that you can use toward these other requests. You see what I'm saying? Right now, you're putting two hundred thousand out of general fund, which is tax bills, into this. If you increase this, you will have to do less of that, freeing up money in the other to do other things with. Now, from a staff perspective, I, even though it's a little bit of an increase, I think it's still a deal, and I think if folks call around and ask other counties, they'll see that it's a deal. The other thing is, I'm a big believer, I said it a minute ago, of passing these fees. Like, if you got a fee for the, to buy water, you know that what you're paying for is that water. A lot of people in the county have property that they let somebody else live in, and they can't get four percent assessment on it. They rent it or it's family or whatever. But when you get that tax bill, you know exactly what you're paying for that trash service, and you pass that on. If you roll this into the general fund, it's all just gets mismatched up in there.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I feel, go up exactly what they caution of, and let the citizens think, and they'll know what they're paying them for. And that two hundred thousand dollars, that to maybe some of the sheriff or whoever. And, uh, and people know, they know that. I mean, it's no secret, they know what's going on. And then not go up on the mills for the citizens too much. That's what I think would be better.
You're gonna, you're gonna, you know, regardless of what you do, like Captain Wood says, people don't complain. But everybody in this room, everybody who's watching this or whatever, knows that the cost of things you're buying right now, it's going up. And this isn't something, you know, careful how I say it, but, but this isn't, we're not doing providing the service. So this isn't accounting, trust, and employees and all. We looked at that, we looked at that, and we looked at it hard, and we presented it. So it's not like we're doing this to make money. We're passing along this cost, which is very transparent. Folks are buying groceries, they're buying gas, all that's going up. I don't, I'm not denying that, but it is, a rational human being knows that the cost of fuel and labor of all things is going up, so. That's our recommendation.
Yeah, I think the big thing is, you know, if they're forcing convenience center, if it's ten dollars extra, you guys don't go back and tell them the charge is ten dollars, and it's like a fix, you know? You're never really drawing off the side of the table, and that's, you said, if there's no choice whatsoever, I mean, hopefully, you can, you know, we still have a lot of trash and a lot of areas to, to just throw it out everywhere, so. And I don't know if it's from the, you know, five dollar fee or three dollar fee, whatever it costs at the convenience center, but you know it. Uh, but if there's no cost, I mean, hopefully that would alleviate, you know? Hopefully somebody would say, look, I don't have to pay anything if you're gutter trash. I mean, that's kinda, you know, you have to try to get mindset change, and I can give it away, but put it there for nothing.
Yeah, you, you, y'all, you know, a lot of folks here manage people or been involved in businesses or have your own business. Can you imagine trying to determine with magic wand, a convenience center on who's charged and who not? I mean, we get calls all the time, you know, kill, I mean, pull this over, you know, over it, so, yeah. Okay, this, again, I, this is in your printout, but I'll also get you more details. And you know, this, we're, we're working this, we're meeting every other day, you know, on this, so we'll, we'll continue to make sure that we're not missing something, but I don't think we're going to. So we're close to the end for tonight, I mean, at least our presentation. We do have other special funds that are restricted. Those things pretty much, what goes in goes back out, but I didn't wanna touch on very quickly. They're, of course, will be included in the budget document, and we can talk about it more if need be. Uh, the first one is rural fire. Uh, county council, golly, eighteen years ago, we added five mills. Was that long ago? Five mills to rural fire, same situation, we got to where we had to, had to do something. And the result was, uh, the ISO rating, insurance cost went down, it's, the system's in very good shape. The revenues covers the expenses. Uh, we're even to the point that we've got growing revenue there, just like we talked about before. And of course, the fire, the fire departments and all, they, they want that money, because they have things they need to do. And, um, one thing they got COVID sidetracked, and I'll use that excuse again, is, um, to get with the fire departments and say, you know, instead of the county council just giving you a check tomorrow, you know, why don't we come up with a plan? You know, could everybody have their air compressors on the same agreement, you know, same makers' agreement? You know, what are things that we can use this additional money to cover to help you? And in fact, tomorrow night, on Wednesday night, the chiefs are meeting, the chiefs are meeting, and they've invited me down. Uh, the good thing is they feed you before they burn into you. They, they're not as bad as they were thirty years ago when I worked here, and you did some too, good Lord. But they're all very open-minded, they got a good group of chiefs right now, and, uh, and they, we're gonna come up with something to bring to y'all and get y'all involved in the discussion. Go to that next step, we made a big step five, five, six years ago. EMS, EMS takes in money from, uh, for billing, the bill on insurance. And, uh, and then we've had the significant financial assistance from the Marlboro General Hospital Charities Trust, where they gave, they basically gave us the money to start the system as far as buying ambulances and all. So that's been going pretty good, we bought an ambulance out of, uh, out of rescue plan money. And, and I think we need one more, I can tell you, coming up. So what Calvin and I, Calvin's done a great job in judgment on all this. We're gonna go and see if that help we've been getting is gonna keep going and just keep rolling. And we've got a good plan where we're not running stuff in the ground. The same thing with the enterprise leases and all we did two or three years ago for a police car. We're not running things into the ground like where we don't run. We saw an impact with COVID with this, because people would call the ambulance, but they wouldn't wanna ride the ambulance to the hospital, because they're gonna get COVID. And so, uh, that's, and so you can't bill unless we, if we go to Anthony Wood's house and we just check his blood pressure and leave, then, but if we have to haul him somewhere, then you bill his insurance. So we have a lot of calls and not a lot of revenue. We also don't have that five-month magic reserve that we're working on. You have restricted economic development funds, you've committed those to the Delta thing, which is getting rid of that contract there, spec building match, and then have a commitment, we talked about, a confidential economic development grant, um, to help try to get somebody here. Those things are just carried forward. One thing that can do out of those, that was on the request, was we need to revamp the county websites. So we'll do the economic development side and the county side at the same time, and that can all go on the same thing. So that saved you a little bit.
And then that side, the county side, better to put my picture on.
I thought we put you, we'll put you in the sheriff's helicopter. What we're gonna write on the side of it? I'll let you, what you gonna write? Mighty fine. That'd be a good slogan for the camp. I mean, I believe that, sure. Okay, so next step is the biggest, there's only one, is, you know, for us to do what y'all want is, you know, you gotta go home and think about it, pray about it, and be lobbying about it, because everybody's, you know, a lot of stuff from Sheriff, he made a great presentation. There are other things, you know, you might hear from somebody else, it always works that way. And then, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, there'd be a need, probably have another work session, considering the magnitude of us here, and the need to follow up on the recreation meeting pretty soon. I don't, you know, we'll get you that information as well. But we're here every day, so it could be a week, next week, be, you know, whenever, preferably maybe not this week, so we can recover. So I'll leave that to y'all. So that's, that's what we have.
How's it going? Do you respect them from, I don't care about this.
Oh, um, I wish I had hooked up, they've got four walls and starting on the roof. It's worth riding out there, because it's one of those things, like, so much stuff we do, like, we talk it to death, and it's, you know, drags on and on. And it's really going up, and I've met with Nisa Commerce about going ahead and marketing it, because there's some belief that we can get it, somebody looking at it before it's ever built.
Now, is that gonna be floor or, or granite? I mean.
It's gonna have a floor.
You'd have floor.
Because Commerce was able to help us with a little more grant money to put a floor in there. Yeah, 'cause you remember those, the last one, they didn't have a floor in there. They used to not put floors in them, because they didn't know what drains and all might be needed. But that's sort of old fashioned now, they don't have a six-inch concrete floor. Do, if you outride and ride by and look at it, it's pretty, it's like wow.
The president of the recreation, they, um, they put a whole bunch of stuff, which I knew they would, but if you can keep that hot, the zone, the information, get it back to the board and get us, uh, you know, work it as good as you can, you know, to screen it. Uh, we're gonna need help from the outside, we don't know that. But with the report, and you see today, they're gonna have to get the cold, you know.
Well, and I, I agree with you completely, because you know, you pushed, doing something by the end of the year, I'm with you on that. I gave y'all some details on, uh, what a park and golf course. And, uh, and then when we get stuff on the recreation center, we'll get that out quickly. Because it's just like this budget, you know, you're gonna get the actionable items now's the time, you gotta figure a path, you can't do it all. I mean, and I thought it was hard on some things, but I think they were kinda hard, they had a hard, a hard thing on a lot of different things, you know? And I, I understand a little defensiveness by, you know, a couple folks in there, but I don't, I've already gotten a text from that individual, you know, and he, he was okay, you know, it's just, you know, you said it, Captain Wood, we gotta get the people with the checkbooks in the room. And talk cheap of them, money. And Wes was saying, we were walking back over here, he said, you know, you listen to all that, and everybody might think they didn't have what they wanted or whatever. But at the top of that sheet, county council put four and a half million dollars on the table. They can talk all day long, y'all have, put your money where your mouth is. And about what you choose at the end of the day, you're gonna have four and a half million dollars better. That's a lot, that hadn't been done in years. So, I hear you.
Ron, is there anything else for you to?
Do you really want me to keep talking? We got more cases in a minute.
Hey, let us talk some more, Jay.
I, I don't need without both hands. And the one more time is thirty, love.